He said he had to work.
I'll now call this meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to welcome everyone who has come out to the meeting tonight and also those who will be viewing the meeting on G-10 television. To begin, I'd like to have everybody stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Councilmember Angela Washington, followed by the invocation by our city attorney, John Carter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly fathers, always, we pause to give you thanks. Thanks for this beautiful day. Thanks for the privilege of living in this city of Jacksonville. And thanks for all your blessings that you so graciously bestow upon us individually and as the city of Jacksonville. We pray as we enter this holiday season that each of us would be acutely reminded of the needs of others, that most of us live very, very comfortably and are so blessed, and that we find during this season, as hopefully throughout the year, that we can find ways to help meet those needs of others who are less fortunate than we. We give thanks and we pray for our military members who are serving us here and around the world. We pray for their anxious families, that you would be with them, as many of them are separated due to this holiday season. And as always, we pray that your guidance and your direction would be with our mayor and with our council. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Counsel, before you have a copy of the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting, I would entertain a motion to adopt, but also adding, well, actually taking off Presentation B and adding a new presentation there, which would be the River of Life Church is making a donation to the city, and put that in place of B, and also to add a resolution under Consent Items, B Item Number, we'll give it a number later, Ms. Ma'am Clark. We'll add it to the Consent Items, pardon me, John?
4A.
4A, there you go. We'll use 4A. And this will be a resolution authorizing an installment purchased by the city manager. Move of approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Here none all in favor of Segment 5 by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, Tub, I'm going to come down and we're going to do a couple of presentations. I'd like to ask Chief Mike Fenero, Officer Williams, Corporal Coco Bill, and Corporal Craig Johnson to help join you at the time. Also, the General Manager, Red Robin, Mr. Michael J.
She can come up too.
She can come up.
On October 24, 2015, Officer from the Jacksonville Police Department, Energy Services Division, and Health and Public Fundraiser, at the Jacksonville Red Robin Market. Come over here. At Jacksonville Mall. The event raised over $1,500 to benefit the North Carolina Law Enforcement Torch Run for Special Olympics. Isn't that wonderful? And on behalf of the Jacksonville Police Department and the Special Olympics, we are honored to present you with this recognition for all the work that y'all did and for joining us or helping us with this venture here and, you know, raising money for Special Olympics. What more worthy of a cause. Thank you so much, Mike.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Our pleasure.
It's very, very important that good community or good corporate citizens like Red Robin gets involved with the community. That's very good. Please pass that up, your chain there, to the owners and all, that we really do appreciate the input. Next, I'd like to call my friend Pastor Chris Phillips up, and you also may have some of your folks with you from the River of Life Church. Come on down.
Come on down.
Come on down. How you doing?
Great.
Mike, how you doing? Good to see you.
Slide down that way just a bit. There you go. Slide down this way.
It's in the works. It's back with the Mr. Pierce. He's asked him to play something. Thanks again. It's Christmas.
It's Christmas.
It's Christmas. The city is very grateful for the continued help that we get, the support we have from the congregation of River of Life Ministries over there on Gum Branch Road. Y'all do a great job. Talking about corporate citizens, you're citizens of faith who help your community and it's so greatly appreciated. This year marks the 10th year in a row that the River of Life Church has provided a donation to help us with much of, you know, some of the community needs that we have here. Over the years, the donations have been a blessing to our citizens in so many ways, including community safety programs and providing life support and lifesaving equipment such as defibrillators, and those have been used by some of our first responding units very effectively and have saved several lives in our community. More recently, the donation has been used to provide recreational opportunities for children in our community who might otherwise not have had the chance to participate. This includes programs such as summer camp and summer enrichment programs, field trips, before and after school programs, and sports opportunities. And on behalf of the city of Jacksonville, I do want to say that I very much appreciate what you do, every one of you. This is a congregation effort. We talk about a community effort, but it's a congregation slash community effort. We thank you very much for being a part of our community. And with that, you said you had something you want to present with me?
Yes, I do. Yeah.
Okay. Now, there we go.
This is a check to the city for $10,000.
Thank you.
And then, of course, as always, I have the real check right here that you can actually deposit. We're very thankful that, once again, God's blessed us this year, and we're able to come back again to the city council, to you, Mr. Mayor, and present this as a gift to the city. We know that it helps underprivileged kids, and it gives them something during the summer, after school programs and just summer programs, that bless them and help them. And so, it's our pleasure to be able to do this, and it reminds us that during this season, God is generous, and God gave, and He didn't give a gift of money, He gave His only begotten Son, that whosoever believes in Him should not perish, but have everlasting life. And on behalf of the congregation and all of our people all along who serve the Lord and who work so diligently in the church, we're very, very happy to be able to, once again, present this to the city, and we look forward to seeing you again next year.
Well, thank you very much, Pastor Phillips. Thank you all very much. Thank you. I know my little gift back to you guys pales in comparison, but it is, you know, we do appreciate what you do for us, and we prepared a nice plaque. Hopefully, you'll place this maybe somewhere like in the foyer in your church, your sanctuary, or even in your office, or wherever you choose to put it. But this is certificate of recognition that we'd like to give you for your continued support of this community and the wonderful gifts that you give to us. Now, I certainly do appreciate it, and this comes from all of you, and thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you.
That's a nice check. Yes, sir. Now, you need for them to form lines, or you got them?
Randy, do you need to get a closer, or is that camera?
All right, let's do this. Three lines this time. We got enough women in the front, men.
Carmen, why don't you jump up and get this real check from, you can stand on the other side. You need to get in here too.
I see two young girls back, self following right here.
Thank you, River of Life. Thank you all.
And we'll certainly let you know how well that money's going to be used as far as helping The last presentation tonight I have is a promotion. Somebody's getting promoted in our Fire and Emergency Services. I'd like to ask, well, let's see here, we got Chief Fenero's here. Who else we have from the Fire Department? Okay, I see them now. I'm still stunned over that $10,000 check. Fellas, how y'all doing? All right, so we're going to promote us an Assistant Fire Marshal to a Division Chief, right? That's right. All right, that's a big one. That's a big move. Sean Hayes, will you and your family come join us? Anybody and everybody you want to bring. I know they're proud of you. We recently had a vacancy created in the rank of Division Chief at the Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services. There were applications received, and candidates participated in an examination or extensive process consisting of formal presentations and a series of oral interviews. Assistant Fire Marshal Sean Hayes was selected for promotion to the rank of Division Chief of the Safety and Standards. And with that, we're going to administer an oath, and I assume somebody's going to hold the Bible for you. Why? Okay. If you'll put your, there you go. And if your left hand goes on the Bible, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Sean Hayes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
In performing my duties.
In performing my duties.
As a Division Chief.
As a Division Chief.
Of the city of Jacksonville.
Of the city of Jacksonville.
Fire and Emergency Services.
Fire and Emergency Services.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any matter on account of.
In any matter on account of.
Personal bias or prejudice.
Personal bias or prejudice.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
The Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
Impartially.
Discharge.
Discharge.
And execute the duties of my office.
Execute the duties of my office.
As a Division Chief.
As a Division Chief.
Of the city of Jacksonville.
The city of Jacksonville.
Fire and Emergency Services.
Fire and Emergency Services.
According to the best of my skills.
According to the best of my skills.
Abilities and judgment.
Abilities and judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Okay, so we have some hardware for you. Let's see, y'all have some pin and imagine to do. Okay.
Help practice this.
Sean, you in the air, your wife standing up.
They can't see her.
Can't see your wife and the mother.
Working four and more.
Let's have one more with Sean and the personnel of the department.
And the mayor.
Sandy, you can get our mayor.
It's been a good night. All right. We are going to come to our, well, first off, I'm going to, I know a lot of you are here for the presentations, and I'm going to take just a brief pause. If you want to hightail it, it's a good time to do it, and I know some of you probably want to go back to work or.
Don't everybody leave.
I'm in positions by the way.
That's good.
This boy's been a good, he's 10 years, 10 years on the job.
Have they started the groundbreaking for their new church yet?
I don't think so.
I guess I better turn my machine on.
All right, we'll go back in session, and next item is the public comments section, and I have one person signed up, and if someone else came in, please, by all means, I'll call on anybody, but I have Kevin O'Connor as our first speaker signed up, so, Kevin.
Good evening, city council. Been a while. Kevin O'Connor, 210 Newport Drive. North Topsail Beach does not need the Jacksonville sales tax dollars. Fred Burns, the current mayor of North Topsail Beach, in his candidate profile stated that Phase 1 is in the bottom of New River Inlet, Phase 5 is incomplete, and the beach cleanup program is $17 million in the hole. That's Jacksonville sales tax dollars that's sitting down there. County kind of screwed the city of Jacksonville three and a half years ago. If you look at the candidates' form prior to the election, the candidates clearly stated that there was absolutely nothing that they could cut out of the county budget. Fast forward about five, six months, county commissioners needed some quick cash, so what they did is they changed the sales tax distribution to ad valorem in order to get some money in their pockets, as well as North Topsail Beach's swan's borough, and Jacksonville was on the short end of the stick for a few million dollars. The other reason it needs to be switched to the ad valorem is if we take the imaginary drive around the city of Jacksonville, and we're going to start at Western Extension in Gum Branch, we have Lowe's Foods, we have the McDonald's, we have Dunkin' Donuts, drive down a little bit, you have the wash house, go down to Kmart, you have the new strip mall in there. If you drive down Henderson, down to Marine Boulevard, Mike, your place is right there with the subway, you have Advance Auto, down the street you have O'Reilly's Auto Parts. Let's go Marine Boulevard, ups towards Yop Road, you have a new Family Dollar going in, some new places up in Yop Road, you have Family Tire that's going in there, you have a new Lou Place, a couple other places in there. Nothing along Lejeune Boulevard, but let's go up Western Boulevard, and Western Boulevard Extension is pretty much booming, you have Hobby Lobby, you have Wally World is going in there, the hotels are coming online, you have Burlington Coat Factory, there's a new shoe store in there, you have old Chicago Strip Mall that's in there, and I'm sure there are several others in there that I have missed as far as commercial properties, which is the second best that you want as far as sales tax, or I'm sorry, as revenue source is concerned. So, the county is benefiting with the city of Jacksonville being the economic engine of the county with the sales tax dollars, as well as the commercial businesses that are coming into place. So, the residents of Jacksonville and the voters, and particularly, they need to understand that the city of Jacksonville needs to get those sales tax dollars since, obviously, the county in North Topsail Beach doesn't need it. Simply put, North Topsail Beach, the city manager stated that 84% of the residences are second homes. No, they're not. They're for-profit businesses down there, many in excess of $1 million a year for sales tax revenue, and they're wasting our money. Thank you very much, and everybody have a great Christmas.
Thank you.
Say it, Kevin.
Anyone else come in after the sheet was taken up? Next, we have to approve our minutes from the November 17, 2015 special workshop and the November 17, 2015 regular meeting, and also the Consent Items, 1 through 4B. 4A.
Mayor, I'll move that we approve this special workshop meeting minutes of November 17th and the regular meeting minutes of that same day to be approved as presented.
And the Consent Items.
And the Consent Items as presented, including Item 4A.
Have a second discussion? Here none all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That'll bring us to our first item, well, actually, Item Number 5. And this will be a rezoning request, a map amendment, and it's a rezoning from RMF LD to corridor commercial 2739, originally as Highway Ryan King be presenting this item.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Items 5 and 6 before you tonight are both rezonings. They are adjacent to one another, so you're going to hear some similar information for both items. In fact, I may make Gen Item 6 a little bit brief based on our presentation here and Number 5 tonight. So, the first rezoning is for a .49 acre tract of land located on Richlands Highway. This will be just to the west of the intersection of Hickory Road and Richlands Highway. The subject parcel here is a wooded tract of land closest to the gas station that's located, I'm sorry, located at the intersection across from the Tractor Supply Center. So, here's the Tractor Supply Center, gas station at Hickory and Richlands Highway. So, the subject parcel, .49 acres, the property owner, David Ray Hemby, has requested that it be rezoned from the RMF LD, the Residential Multifamily Low Density Zone, to corridor commercial. As you can see here on the screen before you, that that's pretty much the area that surrounds the property, the pinkish color. So, basically, it would be changed to corridor commercial, excuse me, along with the rest of the area. The next item, Gen Item 6, will be for this parcel here next door. So, it follows the Camelann use plan that identifies this area for neighborhood commercial, I'm sorry, for regional commercial, and the staff has analyzed the rezoning, believe that it follows our plans. In typical fashion, we did not require a transportation impact analysis. As rezonings, we typically push that out till the development plan comes forward. So, we will not be asking for a traffic impact analysis with the rezoning. So, if approved, the property would be rezoned to corridor commercial, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that the city council may have at this time.
Counsel, any questions around this time? Okay, we're going to recess the council meeting and open the public hearing that's required on this matter. Is there anyone present wishes to speak to this matter, so please indicate by, Mr. Bailey? Phil, state your name and address for the record.
Warren Bailey. My office, 45 Western Boulevard in Jacksonville. Mainly, I just want to tell everybody hello and tell you how much we appreciate what the council does and to tell you that southwest Jacksonville is strong. Our sales are good, and we have some very exciting things that are going to happen out there. And so, if you can talk any of these people who want to go to Western Boulevard and so forth, if you'll bring them out our way, we just want you to know that we're doing good, and we've got a lot to offer out there. But again, I thank you for all that you do. Appreciate if you would vote for Mr. Tammy's property tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Saying no one, I will recess to close the public hearing and reopen the council meeting. Counsel, are you being asked to consider the proposed rezoning?
Mayor Phillips, I'll move that we approve the rezoning request based on findings of fact, A through J being found in the affirmative, and that the rezoning advances the public interest by creating more development opportunities and making the zoning consistent with our future land use map.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have item number six, and this is the other piece to that, that's a public hearing map amendment for a rezoning from Residential Multifamily Low Density to Corridor Commercial, 2757 Richlands Highway. Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. So the adjoining property, 1.03 acres, currently within the city's ETJ, so as with the previous development site, or future development site, if it, basically, would have to be annexed to receive the city services, which we would expect that they would to obtain the water and sewer and police and fire protection at this location. Basically, the same request to go to follow the Camel Land Use Plan to Regional Commercial and currently zoned RMF LD, it would change to Corridor Commercial to follow the same track that you just rezoned immediately adjacent to. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Counsel, any questions around this?
One other thing to point out, the planning board did recommend approval of both of these rezonings, as well as staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Right. We'll recess the regular council meeting, open the required public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone wishes to speak to this matter?
My name is Warren Bailey. If you see the map, this does complete a little bit of our puzzle out there. This is one of the few tracts that's remaining. I think Mr. Yopp's property across the street from us is another big parcel that is going to play into the overall master plan of the shopping area in the southwest area. Right now, we have probably well over 100 and somewhat acres that have been developed or in the development. There's close to 400, 500,000 square feet that have been developed and are in the process of being developed, and I cannot tell you the number of jobs that have been created in the southwest community. And so we're proud of it, and we're so proud that the city council did the things that they did to help us as far as the water and the sewer and things of that nature, that is such an integral part when you start trying to develop a piece of commercial property. I'm a commercial guy, and I've always said that I think that the commercial adds as many jobs so many times as the, you've heard me say this many times, but so much as the industrial. And when you get the commercial people to go, whether it's a McDonald's, or whether it's a Walmart, or whatever it is, these people do have the jobs. If you go to any of these, Mike, if you go to your restaurant, I mean, these are the people who have the jobs. And so anything that we can do, I think, to get our commercial complex growing and expand our city limits and get the utilities to it, and help these, the people who are trying to develop the commercial, I think that is, along with the residential, but I do think that is the growth of our county. And thank you so much.
Tell you what, it really looks good out there, too.
Thank you so much. Thank you. We appreciate all you've done.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak to this matter? I'm going to close the public hearing in this matter. Recommit the regular council meeting, and counsel, are you being asked to consider the rezoning?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the rezoning based on findings of facts of A through J being found in affirmative, that the rezoning advances the public interest, and it also will make the zoning, will make our land use plans more consistent.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to agenda item number seven, and this is a special use permit and a type 3 site plan for a telecommunications tower at 900 Ramsey Road, and Jeremy Smith be presenting this item. And it's a quasi judicial hearing, so at this time, I'll swear you in. Do you swear the information you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you go?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have before you a special use permit and type 3 site plan for a proposed telecommunications tower at 900 Ramsey Road. You'll note the location before you on the aerial on the screen. This project has been submitted by Towercom 4 LLC. It is on a 2.9 acre tract, again, at 900 Ramsey Road. This property is currently zoned RS F 20, as are the adjacent properties to the north and west and across Ramsey Road. There is property in Onslow County's jurisdiction to the immediate east. This is the existing zoning, I'm sorry, this is the land use, which is all low-density residential, the zoning, RS 10 across Ramsey Road at the corner of Totem Drive. Before you is the site plan. City staff has reviewed this site plan and the special use permit and have found it to meet all our standards. The planning board recommended approval of this project, and at that time, there were two conditions that have been addressed since that time, and now this is being recommended to you without condition, with findings of fact A through G being found in the affirmative. Representatives from Towercom of Towercom 4 are in attendance and will be here to address any questions that you may have, as well as staff.
Two additional comments. This is a monopole, and you'll notice it says it's 145 feet with 150 to the highest appertenance. Thank you. As the standard practice, we did review this with the airbase. They had no issues with it. It is not within our 100-foot overlay, flight overlay pattern, so just wanted to make sure the record understands that the military did review this. What were the two conditions the planning board?
We were waiting for confirmation with Marine Corps Air Station New River for lighting requirements, and there will be a red warning light placed on there and fire access to the site. The plan at the time did not show the proper width of the fire access than it does now for a fire truck.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Chair?
Thank you.
Officer, anyone present wishes to speak to this matter? If you would, please approach the podium. Ma'am, if you would, please raise your right hand, and you swear the information you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you go?
I do.
Would you please state your name and address for the record?
Dana Pelizari, Pennington Law Firm, 1501 Main Street, Columbia, South Carolina, 29209. Thank you, sir. Good evening. First, I just would like to, because this is a quasi judicial hearing, I just wanted to go ahead and submit to the council a full copy of our application that had previously been submitted to the planning department, as well as the revised construction drawings, which do address the conditions that Mr. Smith spoke about. There's also a letter from the property owner who cannot be present tonight, indicating that, obviously, that he does support the telecommunications tower. And lastly, there is a real estate impact study that we had prepared, as well as an affidavit from Michael Berkowitz, who prepared the study, which supports our notion that the telecom, telecommunications tower will not negatively impact the surrounding properties. Much of what I had prepared, which was just a short PowerPoint presentation, does duplicate what Mr. Smith said. I'd be glad to go through the information again, or if y'all have any questions, I'd be glad to answer any questions as well, but our application, which was submitted, does go through and verify and confirm that we do meet all the requirements of the special use permit, as well as the findings of fact that are required.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much for that information.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this matter? Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing, and I will reconvene the council meeting. Counsel, are you being asked to approve the site plan, special use permit?
Mayor Phillips, I'll make the motion that council approves a special use permit and site plans with findings of fact A through G being found in the affirmative, and all previous recommended conditions have been addressed.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. So we're going to come now to our report section of tonight's meeting, and I'm going to start with, are you ready? I'm sorry. No public comment?
Nobody here.
Nobody here?
Nobody's here.
Okay. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Very quickly, I have some very good news for us. The widening of Henderson Drive between Gum Branch Road and NC 53, Western Boulevard Extension, as we call it, will be funded. Construction is scheduled to begin in 2020, but we believe that we can expedite that process, and that's what we are working towards. So that's very exciting news. Also, the last segment of 24 in Sampson County will connect Camp Lejeune to Fort Bragg, and that's a significant project that we're very excited about, and for our military partners for the connectivity between the two bases and joint training and just mobility between the two bases. So we're very excited. It's very good news for us, so, thank you.
Yes, I would just like to thank Chief Pianero. This past Saturday, he participated as the guest speaker at the Ecumenical Prayer Service that was held at St. Julia Ami Zion Church in a collaboration, a pairing the public with law enforcement in terms of addressing violence in the community and getting law enforcement more involved. So kudos goes out to Chief Pianero for a yeoman's job well done.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment on tonight's swearing in of Chief Hayes. I noticed when I was reading through the agenda that the opening was created when Division Chief Susanna Williams resigned to accept a position as Fire Chief for Carboro. So I thought that was very complimentary of our staff, that people are moving up and opening up ways. I thought that was very exciting. Also, right before I came to the meeting tonight, I saw on TV just a commercial, a random commercial of, I think it was some kind of finance company, but they were using the fountain as their background, as, you know, they were doing their commercial, but that was their background. I thought that was pretty admirable, I guess.
First Bank does it every day.
But this was on TV. Yeah. Anyway, that was pretty neat. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, since this is our last meeting before Christmas and the holidays, I want to wish each of y'all a Merry Christmas. I'm sure we'll be seeing each other out and about town at various functions, but if not, Merry Christmas to each of you.
Merry Christmas to you.
And to the staff, too. I don't mean to exclude y'all.
Thank you. The only thing I have is I just hope everybody gets out and enjoys this warm spring weather that we're about to have, and I bring the sentiments of everyone having a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And Dr. Woodruff?
Mayor, members of council, several items. We know that over the Christmas holidays, there will be students out of school. Like to remind parents that if you're looking for something for your children to do, the city recreation program does offer what we call the Polar Olympics. Now, I'm not sure Polar is the right title, since we're going to be experiencing 74 degrees this coming weekend, but hopefully at Christmas time, it will be cooler. But we offer programs from 7:30 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. for ages 6 through 11. So if you're looking for something for your children to do, you need someone to take care of them in a safe environment, please call the city recreation program. Those programs will be offered every day that the city is open during the Christmas holidays, which is basically almost all of them. That does bring up the fact that City Hall is closed the 24th and 25th, that's Thursday and Friday. That means, once again, residential garbage will be modified. Monday service will be Monday, Tuesday service will be Tuesday, Wednesday service will be, the Wednesday service will be what normally is Thursday and Friday. We also would remind persons that after Christmas, when you decide that you'd like to do something with your tree, please put it out. We do recycle those Christmas trees. We would ask, though, make sure your wife takes all of the lights and ornaments off the light, off the tree, before she, notice she, places it at the curb. Last thing that we would like to mention is, this coming Thursday, city staff members will be volunteering to ring the bell at Salvation Army out at the Yop Road Walmart. If you're out that way, and you see some people adorned in various Santa Claus hats, including possibly some council members, just, we have a slogan. If you want us to sing a Christmas carol, put in a dollar. If you don't want us to sing a Christmas carol, put in $2. Mayor and council, we also would like to commend to you the city staff for a phenomenal winter fest this past weekend. Had probably 3,000 to 4,000 people out, sledding and ice skating, and pictures with Santa, as well as the lighting of the tree. We appreciate the fact that the council and the mayor provide the funds so that this is a free activity for our citizens, and as always, Merry Christmas, and thank you for the leadership you provide this community.
Thank you. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you, John.
With that, I've then retained a motion to adjourn. All in favor?